Good evening, everybody. I'm gonna go ahead and call our regular Thursday, September 12th board meeting to order at four thirty. Um, Board of Trustees' regular meeting is now called the Order at four thirty. We welcome members of the public. Instructions on making public comment are posted in Item One on the agenda. And we will ask at each item if there is any public comment. This point, Naomi, can you do a roll call?
Trustee Baker.
Here.
Trustee Dog.
Here.
Trustee Kishnap.
Here.
Trustee Iverson.
Here.
Trustee Olson.
Here.
Trustee De Luna.
Present.
Trustee Rios.
Here.
And Trustee Cindy Gonzalez.
Here.
Thank you. Uh, at this point, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. And Trustee Rios, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, next is our land acknowledgement. As we gather today, it is important to acknowledge that Napa Valley College and the surrounding Napa Valley sit on the unceded, traditional, ancestral, and contemporary homelands of the Miwok, Potwun, who are comprised of three federally recognized tribes, the Kalso Dhihe Band of Windtoon Indians, of the Kalusa Indian Community, the Kaltsaw Dhihe Band of Windtoon Indians, and the Yocatjihi Windtoon Nation, and Wapo, including the Mishwa Wapo, also known as Onostasis Peoples. As part of an Napa Valley College's mission of transforming lives through educational and professional opportunities that are student-centered, equity-focused, and community-oriented, and in accordance with the college's values of accountability, integrity, inclusion, respect, social justice, and sustainability, we make this acknowledgement. We also affirm that this acknowledgement is insufficient, does not undo the harm that has been and continues to be perpetrated against Indigenous people, the land, and water. May we hold steady on our commitment to be in solidarity and in action to seek equity and justice with the Miwok, Potwun, and Wapo peoples. Uh, and next, we're gonna move to two point four, adoption of the agenda. Do I have any objections? Okay, no vote is needed. Agenda has passed. Alright, so the board recognizes September fifteenth through October fifteenth as Latinx Heritage Month. We encourage all students, staff, faculty, and members of the public to honor the transformative contributions that have been made for our community and to value the roles and transformative contributions of Latinx and Hispanic Americans to the local and national economies, culture, and identity of our society. Um, we do have some recognitions of our newly tenured faculty. And I'm gonna turn that over to Dr. Moore.
Thank you very much. Um, this is really a wonderful occasion to acknowledge two new tenured faculty. And actually, I'm gonna go in reverse order. So I'm gonna start with Marisa Garcia Rodriguez. Unfortunately, she's not able to be here tonight. But I wanted to share just a few highlights about her before I introduce our second honoree. So, um, Marisa teaches in the Communication Studies Department, and she has served on the Student Success Standards Committee and now serves on Faculty Business. She is working on a new course in Gender and Media Studies. And, um, one of the important contributions she's made particularly to her department is developing a shared Canvas shell where resources across all of their courses are held. And that includes OER resources and access to assessment materials. So that's been a really great contribution for all of the faculty in her area. And student comments say that she is a fun, engaging instructor who makes them feel safe in the classroom. So that is wonderful and all we would hope for a faculty member. The second person I'd like to recognize is here tonight, and Anna Claire, do you wanna give a wave or stand or yay? Anna Claire teaches in the Mathematics Department, and she serves as the Math Department Coordinator. So this is quite, um, quite a commitment and just a symbol of her professionalism that she's taken on this very important role so early on in her time here at Napa Valley College. She is also one of the leads for our AB seventeen oh five implementation, which is the requirement that we place students into the appropriate math class according to their major. And she's been really instrumental along with her colleagues and, uh, her dean in helping us to make sure that our placement tool is up to date and that all the placements are working with our math courses. I also want to acknowledge her leadership as the co-chair of the Curriculum Committee. This, yes. This is, um, this is such an important role, particularly at this time. There is so much happening with curriculum. We have AB nine twenty-eight, we have Common Course Numbering, we have a whole bunch of courses that we are updating, and she has just stepped in. You may, may know that we had a, um, curriculum co-chair who needed to leave mid-year last year, and Anna Claire stepped in mid-year in this incredibly complex, highly responsible, very detail-oriented, can I stop using so many adjectives? Really important role, um, and did it so well and serves so well this year and is continuing on in that role. And I do want to also finally acknowledge that Anna Claire really typifies what I, I consider, uh, a, a positive, supportive, professional, engaged instructor. Um, she has committed to professional development at every stage of her journey in this tenure process. And she has revamped her curriculum, her syllabus, her grading methods. And she has been a key member of her department in helping lead the conversation about how we transition our courses to be more student-friendly and student-supportive. So I just want to acknowledge with, with all my heart, uh, Anna Claire Elisa Saris. Congratulations.
Anna, did you have anything you wanted to, to share? We love having you here and appreciate your leadership and service, so thank you. Congratulations too. Okay, and Marisa too, I know you're not with us, but thank you for all that you do for the district. Uh, we're gonna move to public comment on closed session items. At this time, the board will devote a total of, of up to fifteen minutes to hear comments. Regarding closed session agenda items, individual comments will be limited to three minutes. I do see some public comment, I don't know if there's more out there. Um, this time, I'm gonna call up. So the items for closed session two, just so everyone out here knows, five point one, Conference with Labor Negotiators, five point two, Public Employment, and five point three, Public Performance Evaluation. Uh, so I'm gonna call Jacenya up. And you had Renee as well, are you guys gonna do alternate or together?
Yes, we're a co-public comment.
Okay.
Thank you. Good evening, Board of Trustees, Dr. Powell, President's Cabinet, and NBC Community. We stand here today in solidarity as the Classified Professionals of Napa Valley College. I want to recognize our classified colleagues joining us via Zoom and our colleagues who weren't able to step away from their desk but are united with us in spirit. Without our classified staff, this college would not be able to operate. We are truly the backbone of this institution. At this time, if you can, I ask my colleagues to please turn around. I hear this statement made in many spaces that we are the backbone of this institution, but it falls short. Colleagues, please turn back around. Our voices get lost in the politics and agenda of the district. We're undervalued and overworked. As an institution of higher education, our mission is to help students achieve their goals, whether it be to transfer to a four-year institution, attain a new career, or advance a current one. I think we all can agree that we care about the lives of our students and want them to succeed. Many of us are former or current NBC students. When you board a plane, the flight attendant that goes over emergency procedures always tells you to put on your mask before helping those next to you. The district would do well to listen to this advice. How can we help others if we cannot even help ourselves? How can we provide for students while letting our employees fall further and further behind? A few weeks ago, we asked Classified to attend the first fifteen minutes of our negotiations meeting with the district. Some share stories of their experiences working at NBC. One employee has to go to the food bank each month. One is a single parent working to support her two children while covering their healthcare costs at almost seventeen hundred dollars a month. Many are paycheck to paycheck, making difficult financial decisions. Some are adults who still live with their parents because of the rising rent and housing costs of the county, and most cannot afford to live at the new apartments on campus. Many others must work two jobs to be able to provide for their families. These are real stories and they deserve real solutions.
The last time we gathered here in this boardroom was back in November of last year, where we presented our Sunshine Proposal for our next three-year contract. As you may recall, this proposal wasn't made lightly. It was crafted with careful consideration, with deep intention drawing directly from the voices of these classified professionals. I want to emphasize a statement that was made back then that remains just as relevant today. As an institution, we are obligated to improve and enhance the working conditions of our classified professionals. These dedicated individuals are the backbone of our institution and of our frontline services, shaping and impacting the experiences of our students every day. Those words were spoken ten months ago, and they still ring true today. Over the past several months, our bargaining team has been engaged in negotiations guided by a commitment to fairness, equity, and good faith. Yet the district has proposed only one percent salary increase for our classified professionals. Let me be clear, one percent. That's nothing more than spare change in a bucket. A one percent alert salary increase is insufficient and falls far short of addressing the sharp rise in the cost of living. A one percent salary increase is inadequate. The classified professionals who are shouldering multiple roles on this campus because of ongoing vacancies in classified professional positions. A one percent salary increase is not enough to attract highly qualified candidates to this institution. A one percent salary increase is insufficient to retain classified professionals who are leaving Napa Valley College, taking with them years, years of knowledge and experience that is essential to the operations of this organization. A one percent salary increase is insufficient, it's inadequate, and it's not nearly enough. We, the Napa Valley College Union of Classified Professionals, call for a fair and equitable compensation, one that keeps pace with the rising cost of living and accurately acknowledges the hard work of our classified professionals. It is their efforts and their dedication that shape the experiences and success of our NBC students. In closing, we must acknowledge the crucial role our classified professionals play in the success and the day-to-day operations of this college. Their tireless efforts and unwavering commitment deserve recognition and fair compensation that truly reflects their contributions. As we move forward, it is imperative that we advocate for a raise that meets the real needs of our dedicated classified professionals and aligns with the values and equity and respect as stated in our mission, vision, and values. Let us work together to ensure that the classified professionals' voices are heard, their contributions are valued, and their compensation reflects the essential role that they play for this institution. Thank you for your continued support and the dedication to this important cause.
I must regrettably inform you, Danielle Alexander and I will not be staying to join you after you all return from closed session. As this puts us over an eight-hour-plus working day, we dedicate a lot of time away from our families for this institution as it is. Our time is invaluable, but we look forward to seeing you all again. Thank you.
Thank you. I have another speaker card for Amanda Frost.
Good evening, my name's Amanda Frost, I'm a Student Affairs Specialist, and I'm the Chief Union Steward. Um, many of us classified are at the frontline, having the initial contact with students. We ensure they feel welcome to this campus. That could be answering a phone call, greeting at the front desk, responding to inquiry emails. We are the ones assisting students to navigate processes to ultimately get them enrolled into classes. This five-step process may seem streamlined to some of you. Believe me, it is not. Uh, we're helping students with the application, looking up their login information, showing them their My NBC app and what they're used for. We're educating them about services and programs the NBC provides. We're processing their financial aid applications in order to support them for success. We're getting them scheduled to meet with counselors, assisting them with acquiring basic needs such as food, school supplies, et cetera. We are the ones processing graduation petitions and diplomas. Countless times, students have told me that they don't know what they would have done without my help. And I can only assume many of my colleagues have experienced the same comments. We are the groundskeepers, we are the custodians, we're the ones cleaning the classrooms, faculty offices, administrators, offices, meeting rooms, library, restrooms. We are the ones making students feel safe on campus with our officers and our staff on duty. We are the backbone of NBC, and we are disappointed and saddened that the leaders of NBC do not value us and all that we do for students. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Amanda. Is there, Mo?
Yeah, I'll just briefly, Mo Kashmiri with ICIU Local ten to one. Um, you know, we're just asking for our fair contract and our fair share. You know, the district is getting four percent. Uh, and we know that we have been underpaid and the cost of living has risen dramatically. We've been talking about how hard it is to live in one of the most expensive areas in the nation. Um, and for the district to offer one percent, and then they also proposed to cut retiree medical benefits so that employees would have to work ninety-nine years before they'd qualify for retiree medical, which wouldn't even save the district any money for thirty years. Um, so we want to make sure that there is a fair deal without takeaways that gives us fair wages, access to affordable healthcare for our families, uh, and also has binding arbitration. So whenever there's a dispute, we can go to an arbitrator and get it resolved uh, without wasting the board's time, uh, and at no additional cost to the district. So, thank you so much, we look forward to your support. Uh, and when you do give us a fair contract, also give me one of these great t-shirts as well, so, um, you know. We represent the admissions and records, the instructional aid, the information technology, custodial services, Veterans Affairs, printing services, the business office, health services, admin support, police, financial aid, counseling, scheduling, accounting, facilities, and athletics, we're the ones that make this district run. And all we're asking is for you to picture, uh, actions and, and show us through your actions that you value and respect. Thank you. I'll pass out a flyer that updates the bargaining.
Is there anyone else out there wishing to speak on this item? Nope. Great, thank you, guys. Uh, at this point, the board is gonna move to closed session. And our goal is to return at five thirty. Roll in again, a little over my apologies. Uh, we're gonna start with announcements out of closed session. We did have, uh, this is exciting, but in closed session, the Board of Trustees approved the following full-time classified administrative assignment. Jenna Sanders as Director of Public Affairs and Communications, starting October seventh. Director of Public Affairs and Communications salary will be based on the administrative confidential salary schedule range nineteen, step C. The salary will be prorated for any partial month of service. So, welcome to the team, Jenna, and we look forward to having you with us. Um, next is public comment, this is our general public comment. This public comment opportunity is governed by the California Brown Act. By definition, this is an opportunity to hear concerns, perspectives, and differing vantage points. The board is not able under the Brown Act to engage in any level of conversation or discussion, but we look forward to this opportunity to gather community input. At this time, the board will devote up to fifteen minutes to review comments to the Board of Trustees regarding any subject not appearing as an agenda item for this meeting but over which the board has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will occur at this time on such items. Each comment shall last no longer than three minutes. Naomi, do we have any cards and no one in the waiting room? Right? Moving to consent calendar. Does any trustee have questions about any of these items? We have no public comment.
I'm of approval.
Second. Uh, motion by trustee Baker and a second by trustee Rios. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You, uh, any discussion? Nope. Uh, propose. Next is item nine point one, Resolution twenty-four twelve, waiver on requirements for sabbatical use. I have, oh, sorry. This is an action item. Was that on consult? Nope, nope. Right, oh, is Jim presenting on this one? An action item, guys.
I'm of approval.
I have a motion by trustee Baker, I have a second.
I'll second.
I have a question.
But second, my trustee Olson, fire away.
Uh, we, we approved this last year, didn't we? Is this something we have to do every year?
Correct, uh, Dr. Moore, you wanna take this one? Give a little more context of the, the background and why.
Um, yes, when someone goes on sabbatical, they need to sign a document that says that they must return to service for a period of time, depending on the length of their sabbatical, or else they will basically owe to the institution the salary that they would have earned during that period. Um, so because our faculty are signing that commitment, uh, the bond waiver seems appropriate so that they're not paying additional expense to, to cover that beyond that obligation. I think your question was, do we need to do this every year? Um, I've worked at institutions where they have made a decision to have it be ongoing, but that's, that's your decision.
You wanna amend the motion, make it ongoing?
I don't know, is that something that needs to be considered by, uh, Dr. Powell and, yeah.
Mr. Crumsey, yeah.
His group, so.
Uh, note for next year, guys, okay. So I had a motion by trustee Baker and a second by trustee Olson, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously, thank you. Uh, twelve point one, Human Resources. Workplace Violence Prevention Plan Presentation.
Good evening. Under California Labor Code Section sixty-four zero one point nine, a Senate Bill five fifty-three, Napa Valley College has created the Work, Workplace Violence Prevention Plan. Um, the acronym that we're using is WVPP, which is designed to educate employees and reduce the risk of violence in the workplace. The plan requires employees to identify and address potential risk of violence, ensuring a safe working environment. The plan includes, um, risk assessments where we will assess, um, different hazards, um, and anything that could potentially lead to violence. It also includes prevention procedures, um, so that as we are working together and looking at our en- environment, we are going to implement measures um, to prevent the risk of violence. Um, we are required to provide training to all of our employees, and the training needs to, um, include how to recognize warning signs of violence, understanding reporting procedures, and how to know to respond to dangerous situations. Additionally, how incident reporting investigation works. We are required to have a clear process for reporting workplace violence. We must investigate and respond to any incidents. This workplace violence plan will be shared out to our community as well as translated in Spanish and made available also to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Charo, any questions on this?
Can I request that that also be available in Tagalog, please?
I will look into that.
Thank you.
Trustee.
Uh, Charo, this is kind of the next two items are your show.
Wonderful. I wanted to share with you the update of our Title IX, um, regulations. As of August the first, twenty twenty-four, the Department of Education released a new Dear Colleague letter instructing us how we should proceed with our Title IX cases. Just a little bit of context, if we can go to the first slide. Title IX actually was an educational amendment in nineteen seventy-two. It dealt with gender equity in sports, sexual harassment, sexual assault, um, and gender identity. Now, in today's world, we have included pregnancy and parenting students and gender identity. If we go to the next slide, the changes that we have witnessed and we're continually learning about. Title IX has always covered pro quo harassment. That's harassment for, I will give you something in return for something. Normally, um, someone of, um, authority will be engaging in that type of harassment. Title IX used to have the definition of severe and pervasive conduct. They've changed it. Title IX, it can be, um, severe comma pervasive conduct. That does change our approach to how we look at Title IX cases and in our investigations. The definition for harassment, they have included sex-based harassment. So sex is sex stereotypes, being discriminated against or harassed based on your sex or your identity. Title IX, the new regulations also provide increased protections for LGBTQ plus students. The protections to transgender and non-binary students, ensuring their right to participate in school programs and use our facilities consistent with their gender identity. This one is really, um, a focus on that is fairly new, the pregnancy and parenting student protections. We now must provide support modifications to our students who are pregnant or parenting. Also, we must identify our lactation spaces, um, under Title IX. We can go to the next slide. Before August first, in all regulations, we were required to hold live hearings. We now have more flexibility in how we deal with, um, any type of Title IX complaints and the process thereof. Title IX covers social media and any action around that, and also off-campus jurisdiction. We must provide support to both complainants and respondents and provide due pr-. We must provide support to both complainants and respondents and provide due process. Under previous Title IX regulations, we had more, um, more authority to take discipline right away. In this, in these new regulations, we must provide due process to both our complainants and our respondents. Under the new regulations, we're also required to provide training for our faculty and staff. Under A B twenty-six eighty-three, all students must be trained on sexual violence. The sexual harassment as part of the orientation, and they must certify that they've been trained within six months of the beginning of the school year. And that is my update to Title IX changes as of August first, twenty twenty-four. Thank you.
Uh, trustee Baker has a question, Charo.
Just wondering if, um, the severe pervasive conduct, is that equal to what's often termed, um, a hostile work environment?
A hostile work environment is when you're being prevented from doing the work that you've been hired to do. The degree of what is going on is, though, that's the measurement. Is it severe? Is it pervasive? And so perhaps a one-time incident may not be viewed as such. Ongoing or the severity of that one time will help us determine in what direction to take the investigation.
I have a question. Um, the student and staff trainings, um, on sexual harassment, is that an online? Uh, training that they all have to complete, or we will be working with partner organizations in the community to provide those trainings?
For the students, the Chancellor's Office has released information and resources for us to utilize. For, um, staff, we're looking for online, um, solution for, for all of our employees.
I have a question too on the students. What happens if they don't do the training? And then do we not allow them to take classes or?
We're not gonna not allow them to take classes, but we will definitely bug them to death until we get them to certify that they take the training. Right, Dr. G?
You don't wanna be on that list, is this?
Cindy will not be on that list. Yes.
Charo, twelve point three, the EEO, our annual report.
This is a new requirement by the Chancellor's Office. This report combines three different reports that previously existed. One was multiple methods, another was a report to showcase how we were using our EEO dollars. And another to, um, report harassment and discrimination complaints. In this report, as I just stated, we have, um. EEO planned, um, implementation update, our fund usage reporting, and our response um, to harassment discrimination complaint. We highlight the strategies to address adverse impact and reduce underrepresentation in our recruitment processes. Such as the use of blind recruitments, removal of the cover letter requirement for facilities, positions, and outreach to passive candidates for hard-to-recrew positions. We focus on component thirteen of the EEO plan that was approved in May of twenty twenty-four. And report on our successes and challenges with the strategies that, um, that we encounter. Um, one of the challenges we are currently discussing is how to support, um, those with disabilities in our recruitment process. We have begun discussion on those strategies at our EEOAC meeting. And we will focus on highlighting resources available and additional language showing that we are an inclusive campus community that supports everyone. Our EEO Advisory Council will continue to review the longitudinal data and develop strategies to decrease underrepresentation in our hires. Even though this is an annual report, our EEO Advisor Council meets quarterly. And I will be presenting to the board data and updates on our recruitment strategies on a quarterly basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Charo. Uh, moving along to, this is an action item, this is our public hearing, and I'm actually gonna turn it over to trustee Baker. Go over both of them and we'll vote on them individually.
And I will very quickly turn it over to, uh, Mr. Reese, but before I do that, um, just wanted to, uh, let you know that the, uh. Audit and Finance Committee met earlier this week to review, uh, the budget, uh, before bringing it to the full board. Um, before I move on to the actions that we took, I wanted to quickly just say, um, thank you to trustee Iverson. Uh, I had, uh, pla- uh, planned to be here, but then I turned out that I had to be in Venetia late, uh, Tuesday evening, and so, uh, the staff very kindly made arrangements for me to be able to participate via Zoom. But in order to make that possible, we had to have a quorum available in the building. And it looked as if we were not going to have that because one of our members was, um, not present. And so, uh, trustee Iverson stepped up, so thank you very much for doing that. Um, and, uh, so he met and had a full review of the budget. And, uh, as a result of that review, had the recommendation from the committee to the full board to approve the budget, and I will let Mr. Reeves take over in case anyone has any questions. Hopefully, if, um, he, if he's gonna make a presentation, it will be an abbreviated version of what we had.
Thank you, trustee, uh, Baker, for that prompt. This, uh, is gonna come in two parts, two very quick parts apparently. Um, to provide you, um, some back, background for the budget and, uh, and where we, we're landing. Appendix A is, um, is the background supporting material for the budget. Uh, let's go to slide two, please. This is the boilerplate, it essentially says we're required by the state to, to, um, to, uh, file, uh, the board-approved budget by the end of September, which we're going to do. I wanna highlight the four bullets here. Uh, the Planning Committee and the Budget Committee collaborated very closely this past year to re- revise and refine the budget process. Uh, to more clearly link, uh, budget and planning and engage our community. So, we, we believe we felt some, we had some good success there. Let's, uh, let's move down to the next slide. Our methodology, these are our, our assumptions, uh, uh, relative to, uh, our revenues and our expenditures. I'll just focus on a very few of them. Uh, our primary revenue stream is from property taxes. And the tentative budget, we projected, uh, revenues at four point seven percent. We're gonna realize about a four point five nine percent, which is a nominal decrease in, uh, revenues from, from, uh, property taxes. Our expenditures, I think it's important to note here that there is a, an earmark in our budget, our Fund eleven budget and Fund twelve budget for salaries and benefits associated with em- employee salaries. And that's, the earmark is for, uh, because collective bargaining agreements are currently being negotiated. The seven hundred fifty is not intended to represent a floor or a ceiling. It is intended to, as a marker in the budget in an effort to, um, at least anticipate what costs might be. And still, uh, still achieve, uh, what we need to achieve in terms of a balanced budget and, uh, maintenance of reserves. Next slide, please. Our fired, filed about, excuse me, budget planning assumptions, we're essentially planning for level enrollments from last year. Um, next slide, please. My twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, planning assumptions are in, are included here. It articulates where we're seeing increases relative to person, stirs, or retirement programs. Uh, our estimated changes in health and welfare benefits, uh, President, uh. President Kyle requested our, our real increase, it was, uh, it's more like nine percent. Uh, Pre- President Iverson as opposed to the twelve percent. So, you thought it was higher, I think we're realizing it a bit, bit lower for the Kaiser renewal. Um, step and column is included as well as out of class. Next slide, please. Our other expense assumptions, we speak to, um, uh, the cabinet has reviewed and supports the strategic initiatives. And we'll have more information on our ability to fund that in the, as this budget is, uh, rolled out. Our operational continuance requests, our new process, a very extensive process, considered everyone's request this year. A little different than we have in the past, and I think, uh, while we won't be able to fund, uh, all of those. Um, I think the process has proved to be a, a good one and certainly is more informative than it has been in the past. Next slide, please. Changes in instructional cost, this is really, um, uh, an effort to demonstrate how we're changing our course offerings. A section is a class. Essentially, you see in twenty twenty-one, we had around a thousand fifty-two sections. We, we dropped in twenty-two, twenty-three to eight ninety, and we're beginning to crawl back, uh, with around nine hundred. And I think as I look at enrollments now, Dr. Moore, I might wanna confirm this, is that we're actually inching up a little bit, so all promising. Next slide, please. Uh, at, at trustee Baker's request, we've included the Board of Trustee goals here. And we've aligned those with our funding initiatives. I won't read those, but we'll go on to the next slide. These are our, the planning assumptions, planning priorities identified by the Planning Committee endorsed by the Cabinet. And, and, um, provided the backdrop for budget planning for the entire community this year. Uh, student performance, two is student basic needs, three is campus climate, four is physical infrastructure. And five is River Trail Village. Next slide, please. You look at the far right column, what we've done is we've aligned the initiative on the left with the Board, Board of Trustee goals. And the second, uh, column on the, from the left are the planning priority alignment. So you can see where we have identified those initiatives that we're funding with, uh, meeting those, uh, planning priorities and those budget. Um, those, excuse me, those Board of Trustee goals. Student Equity and Support, uh, you can see two point three million dollars instructional supplies, laptops and devices to expand internet. That actually dropped from the tentative budget to twenty-five thousand because we're seeing a reduction in lottery funds coming our way. Uh, as a, as a result of some decline in, in lock, in, uh, enrollments over time. We anticipate seeing a little rise in that as our enrollments increase. Instructional supplies, we've added fifty thousand here. Um, to, to address some, uh, instructional needs. Infrastructure improvements include the physical plant funds, carryover, the improvements in our Student Activity Center, security cameras. Um, and a, a couple of other items there. Uh, increase and decrease in fund balance, I'll spend a little moment on this in a second presentation, but we are seeing a positive increase in fund balance. Next slide, please. On May first, the cabinet, the president issued, uh, a memorandum indicating what positions we would hire this year. And the cost of those positions, uh, personnel hires generally responsive to students in residence and student, uh, wraparound services. Uh, and they, they are at about three hundred, three thousand dollars out of Fund eleven, and those are included in the budget. Operational continuance was a, was a funding request that the Budget Committee has, uh, considered. And we will be, be able to fund some of those, I don't think all of them, but certainly, uh, we'll, we'll keep those in the queue. Basic needs food support, student housing, we are funding a, a basic needs food support program in our student housing. In addition to one prepared meal for everyone in student housing, Monday through Thursday. It's seeing great success and it's been well received. You know, what student doesn't like free food? Um, I don't think we're gonna hit that for it, it's not gonna cost us four fifty because the numbers are lower than we projected. Um, so we might have some savings there. Facilities master plan, total cost of ownership, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars is tucked away. Uh, and that's to meet, uh, not only our planning objectives, but also our accreditation objectives. We have, uh, that ongoing, uh, need for environmental consultant relation related to the Ash landfill. Projected in next year's budget at a hundred twenty-seven thousand. Next slide, please. Just a few notes on Fund eleven. Uh, positions, replacement positions are, are considered, uh, on a one-for-one basis by the president's cabinet. To be sure that we are making decisions that, uh, do two things. Number one, uh, that we consider those in light of current need. Uh, whether we can combine those, um, positions to meet additional needs and whether they, um, how they impact the fifty percent law. The fifty percent law is top of mind at the cabinet table in terms of considerations for budget expenditure is particularly related to staffing. Number four, I wanna reiterate that any change in the fund balance is a projection dependent on the ending balance for twenty-three, twenty-four. And realized revenues expenditure for twenty-four, twenty-five. So we haven't quite, quite closed twenty-four. It could shift a little bit, but it will impact twenty-four, twenty-five as well. All that to say it could change, my, I anticipate that'll, that, uh, the change won't ne- negatively impact us. Number six, the final budget does not include any student housing revenue projections or possible expenses related to the district's support and age liability. Staff recommends that it's set aside from available reserves and the amount to be determined be designated by the Board of Trustees for this purpose. And we'll spend a moment on that in just a moment. Next slide, please. Notes to Fund twelve, these are categorical and, um, grant funds. And, uh, they're represented, uh, in our Fund twelve, as you know. And, uh, we're seeing some increases in revenue rela- related to the small COLA increase. Um, and program balances are still being, uh, developed as we close the books. Next slide. This is just a depiction of the process where we are. We're actually at the middle box on the bottom. And this is considered a draft budget until, um, the board acts on. Next slide, please. This is the intermission. Any questions thus far? Um, if you don't mind, President Iverson, if we could just go through the formal budget presentation, and I'll try to do this as quickly as possible. So this is the formal budget presentation that you will act on. It includes all ten funds. I'm not gonna go spend a lot of time with each of them. In your spare time, if you'd like to do that, I'd be happy to. Let's go to Fund eleven, please. I'm sorry, um. Let's go through the acknowledgement, acknowledgements here. I wanna take a moment just to acknowledge, um, the support and good work on behalf of our finance staff. Wendy Newcor, our, uh, controller, um, Yung Tep Tran, our budget analyst, who's proven to be a whiz. David Prince, uh, and, and others in our finance team have been, uh, instrumental in putting this together. And, and, uh, I appreciate it, and the district appreciates their good work. Let's move down to, um, Fund eleven. It's Fund eleven, this is where, um, where the college's operating funds sit. The far right column, this is a schedule you probably all recognize. I wanna note that, uh, on the descriptor on the far left column where it says federal income, state income, et cetera. They have a number in parentheses that just ties to the footnote in the bottom. So if you wanted to look, see how we came to those numbers, just reference the footnote in the bottom. The revenues are in green on the bottom, the expenses are in blue. So the big changes here in the revenue side, we're looking at about two and a half million dollars, additional dollars in total revenue. We're seeing most of that from property taxes. Recall that four point five nine percent. Uh, we're looking at that. The other increases, other local, uh, income, uh, it is coming from uh, a source that, uh, we're, we're happy to see. Uh, a good portion of that is from, uh, out-of-state students. This time last year, we had three out-of-state students. This year, we have thirty out-of-state students. Not only does that bring a diversity to our student body. But they, they bring financial resources to the, to the district that, um, that, that help our budget clearly.
Jim, could you say that one more time? What were the difference in terms of out-of-state versus last year versus now?
Uh, three this time last year.
Thirty.
Out-of-state or F one international, thirty this year. Uh, I'll ask the question, why do you think that is?
No, I don't need to ask, I know.
Okay. All right.
But actually, sorry, Jim, I ruined that for you. Why, why does that exist?
Why is that? Jay Leno will never be. It's, it's largely because we have a student housing. The ability to house students, bring them to Napa Valley, bring them to Southern California to study, be part of our programs, be in this area. Have the ability now to, uh, not only benefit from our programs, but to transfer to places like Berkeley and Davis and and the CSU's and to be in, in the greater, um, San Francisco area. So, I think we're gonna see more of that, and it really, uh, really jumps up our revenues quite dramatically. The expense side of that, we need to continue to look at, and we will have some wraparound expenses that are required just to adequately support uh, and out-of-state population. So thank you for that question, uh, trustee Dodd. Moving on to, uh, salaries, um. I'll share with you that these salaries, uh, typically, uh, are, are reflective of the July payroll. And we have added, um, step and column increases, and you'll see in the last line of salaries is the earmark at seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. So, thus far, we have a commitment of, in total salaries of twenty-eight point four million dollars. Um, about a one point seven million dollar increase over, over last year. Thank you, Solange. Total benefits were just under a million dollar increase, uh, and the benefits are reflective of any increases in salaries. Next slide, please. These are, um, the remainder of our budget. Uh, trustee Baker asked, uh, the other night, what's included? These are the remainder of our budget. Trustee Baker asked the other night, what's included in other supplies? Trustee Baker, I'll provide an answer to you. It's not as specific as you probably would like. It's generally a conglomerate of lots of supplies, including copy machine supplies, athletic supplies, some food, some printing supplies, and some marketing supplies. So it really is a combination of lots of supplies across the enterprise. Got it. Okay, so our total operating expenses, operating supplies has increased about $590,000. You'll note the variances on the very top. Other professional services, that's largely due to the full year realization of the management agreement with Alucion. The other one is 159,000 in insurance and benefits. Both have increased this year, and we're projecting an increase of about that. And so that addresses operating expenses. Capital outlay, capital outlay, we've reduced by 215, largely because some of the capital outlay expenses in the past were one-time expenses, and so they are reflected moving forward. Other outgo, outgo inter-fund transfers. If I can take your attention to the pre-close line, Solange, under other outgo inter-fund transfers, it says 1.436415. That represents a recommendation to the Board to transfer $650,000 to Fund 61 to support the student housing support native liability. In addition to that in there are the costs that get transferred out to support the construction manager for the Wine Education Center. And also it transfers out the costs related to related to the Facilities Master Plan and the total cost of ownership. And so if you scroll down to the next page. Thank you. I'll just take your attention to our pre-close unbalanced amount as a percentage of. We're looking at a close of 16.81%. A slight bump, I'll share with you that the Chancellor's threshold they're looking for is 16.67. So we've got about 13 basis points to work with here on the positive side. Next year, we're looking at about 16.8, so we're still reaching that threshold. And of course, in terms of dollars, we are increasing the dollars devoted to our reserve. The percentage is always a percentage of your total expenditures. So as those expenditures rise, that total dollar amount needs to rise. And with that, I would entertain any questions on Fund 11. Hearing none. Trustee Baker, can I move on? Onto Fund 12. Fund 12 are grants and categorical expenses. I'll point out this is intended to balance. I will share with you there. We also have some salaries and benefits here. So we've also earmarked a set aside under salaries of $150,000 to address any salary increases related to this grouping of employees. Rolling down, I think we should be balanced here, maybe with a fund balance. We should not have a fund balance all the way to the bottom. Good. Alright, any questions on Fund 12? We do not have a Fund 13. We're moving on to onto our bond debt. This is an in-and-out at the county. The county takes the revenue off the top and pays the bills. It is a running balance of our bond debt. We report it, we have the audit for it. We don't touch these funds internally. But we are seeing a reduction in obviously the bond debt obligation. Next slide, please. This is Fund 33 and 35, our childcare fund. It is essentially an in-and-out. We do retain a small administrative fee, and that's why you see a balance at the bottom of $88,000. Right, Solange? Am I right about that? $88,000? So again, that's an in-and-out for the childcare center. Next slide, please. This is a capital outlays project. You'll notice that this has a $12 million in revenue. And just about $12.5 million in total expenses. This is where the Wine Education Center revenues come in from the donor and the foundation in terms of revenue, and then go out in terms of expenses for that project. That's the majority of those funds. Next slide, please. This is liability self-insurance. This is Fund 61. We referenced this earlier. You'll notice that on the top, you'll see a pre-close in '23, '24. Other financing sources, $750,000. $650,000 is that subordinated liability. $100,000 is a prepaid insurance fund so that we have funds available for insurance purposes for a prepaid purpose. So that's what makes up the 250. When you look at next year's budget, we have $350,000. We're anticipating that we may need to refresh that subordinated liability fund. So we've added $250,000 in next year's budget. And we've also included an additional $100,000 for prepaid insurance. Do you have any questions on that piece? And I would offer, look at the footnotes in A here if you have any, if I can help you with that. Next slide, please. This is the other internal services, essentially the print shop. You may remember we pulled the print shop out as a discrete funding area so we could understand what our real costs are, offset those with an advance program to generate additional revenue to offset those expenses. Next slide, please. Post-retirement benefits of OPEC, you'll notice the budget is $1.820 million. This is a transfer from Fund 11 to cover three things. The medical costs for our retirees is about $1.3 million. Then we have two annuities to cover the costs of our early retirement incentive program, the SERPs, SERP 1 and SERP 2. Those annuities hover around $480,000. And that's the transfer to this fund, and bills get paid out of this fund. Next slide, please. This is the Retirement Benefit Trust. The balance here, we have total revenues of about $300,000 and ending fund balance of about $1.3 million. We have total liabilities here over time of about $30 million. So we have a little ways to go to meet that ongoing liability today. It's a transfer fund from Fund 11, so it is a pay-as-you-go approach as opposed to funding it from reserves on an annual basis. Next slide, please. Associated Student Body Fund. The budget that's proposed by our ASNDC is represented here and based on the revenues they see from their fees. And so I think they have a fund balance here. Thank you, of $160,000, so they look pretty healthy. Next slide, please. This is a student representation fee. These are funds that are set aside from student fees to support students traveling to to meetings to represent the interests of students and local government, state government, and federal government causes. And the balance here, I think, is still pretty healthy at about $27,000. And then finally, our Student Aid Fund. This is essentially an in-and-out fund. This represents our federal student aid, our state student aid, a total of about $5.1 million. We retain a small portion of that as an administrative fee. And so the fund balance is 25, 26 million, excuse me, 25, 26,000. Thank you. And that, I believe, concludes my report.
And the Student Travel Fund, does that cover our student representative as well, or does that come from somewhere else?
Could you repeat that, trustee?
The Student Travel Fund?
It is a student representation fund.
Does that cover our?
Trustee Baker asked that. I think it does. I think there are some guidelines around how much it will support and where they can't stay at the rates kind of thing. Yeah? But that's available, and it hasn't been tapped into. So I think we certainly, Cindy might want to convey that message, those funds are available. Any other questions, anyone?
Jim, before we approve the budget, I just want to thank you for all your work. It's a testament to our team here at the District, but I mean, the last few years, you've really rolled your sleeves up and cleaned up the budget. It's nice to see this being balanced.
The credit goes to a lot of people, and they deserve the credit as well. So thank you. I'll extend that to the team.
Please do, thank you. Okay, I'll entertain a motion for approving our 2024, 2025 budget.
I will move approval, second.
A motion by trustee Baker and a second by trustee Deluna. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, good work, thank you. Next is 13.2, this is the Fund 61 liabilities, the resolution.
This also was reviewed by the Audit and Finance Committee, and we also wanted to forward our recommendation that this be approved.
Any questions? Motion to approve?
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by trustee Dodd and a second by trustee Rios. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
You. This is you again. Unrespected General Fund 13.3.
Thank you, President Iverson. I will be brief. This is still a pre-audit. And just some minor changes here. You can look forward to the next presentation of this that will include the adopted final budget and then expenses against that through the first quarter. You'll notice that on the revenue side, we have hit 100% of our projected revenue for the year, closing in June 30th. That's very positive. And we saw it because we saw it 101% of property taxes. So we saw a little bit of trickle in at the end that took us over the 100% line for total revenue. The remainder of the report is very similar to what you've seen in the past. It is, I would offer pre-audit. There could be some minor changes to these numbers as we close the books and we complete the audit. But I think it is a fairly positive story. We had a balanced budget. Our key, excuse me, our key performance indicators were, we had a balanced budget. We improved on the on the reserve balance to the extent that we'll meet the minimal requirements from the Chancellor's Office. And we were able to address our liabilities, including the subordinated liability with housing.
Any questions? Thank you, Jim. Next is Item 14, this is our reports. Let's move to Associated Students in Napa Valley College Report, Priya. Do we have a report?
Okay, 14.3 Classified Senate Report. Is Danielle with us this evening? Anyone in the waiting room? Nope. Classified Association Report, Jacenia?
Jacenia's not here.
Right. Administrative Confidential Senate Report, is Christina with us this evening?
Christina is here. Hello, can you hear me? Great, we can.
I hear you.
Hey, hi, good evening, Board of Trustees, Dr. Powell, Cabinet, and members of the campus community. On behalf of the Administrative Confidential Senate, I would like to congratulate our newly tenured faculty, Professor Anna-Claire Elisa Aras and Dr. Marissa Garcia Rodriguez. We also welcome to the administrative team, Kelly Giva, Manager of Title IX and Civil Rights Compliance, and Jenna Sanders, Director of Communications. The AC Senate would also like to take a moment to acknowledge and express our gratitude to Danielle Savage, who is leaving us after a number of years at NBC. Her leadership, dedication, and contributions to the Office of Human Resources and the college have been invaluable to our growth and success as a group and as an institution. We will miss Danielle and wish her well in her post-NBC endeavors. In other things, the management team has been tasked with determining goals and budgets for this year for their respective areas related to the metrics of the Educational Master Plan and Cabinet priorities. Major themes from this exercise point to our collective desire to establish data-informed enrollment and planning practices, enhance the experience and persistence of students by streamlining our very complex registration systems, and improve the overall college climate and culture for students and staff. So as we all know, there are a multitude of goals that we wish to accomplish in our respective areas. So we continue to be mindful of priorities that are most beneficial to us as a collective and those that continue to dismantle barriers for our most underserved students. That concludes my report. Thank you, and have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you, Christine. Academic Senate Report, Matthew, you're up.
So in person. Christina, as always, leads the fellowship, is welcome our new tenured faculty. We're also happy to welcome five new tenured people. At our first meeting, we're really starting new work, there's not a lot to report in terms of that. A lot of reservations about. Our recommendation or our goal would be to see that be a permanent process, but we understand. I also want to say that as a discussion item today, I know that's an area that's being explored in various areas. Back on that process, I am a new faculty here relatively soon. I'd like to see a more documented process for that.
I have an Association Report, Charles?
One? So this is the first time I'm doing this. I'm very excited, but. So anyway, my name is John Pincillo. I teach English at the college and for a while, but I'm just starting a brand new role. So I started at the college in 2018, actually. So this is the beginning of our seventh year.
Much. Oh, there we go, okay. For four years, for two terms. And so I was asked, you know, sort of volunteered to, you know, take on this role. And but then I was elected by my fellow faculty members, and I'm very grateful for that honor. So I wanted to start by introing our board, our Executive Board for the Faculty Association because some folks are new. And I wanted to introduce them so that, you know, you had the opportunity, perhaps if you see them around campus, to say hi. The first of which you know very well, which is Kristi Uemoto. She is the former Faculty Association President. She's now our Vice President and grievance officer. So she'll be serving in that role for the next two years. My colleague Angela Moore, who's a counseling faculty on campus, she's our incoming secretary. She's starting her first work with the Union in that role, so we're very excited to have her and that she stepped up for the position. Dr. Marissa Garcia Rodriguez is a relatively new faculty member on campus. She is a Communication Studies faculty, and she's stepping up as our treasurer for the first time as well, working with our Union. So we're very excited to have new faces on our board. Greg Moraglia, who is an administrative justice faculty, is continuing on as our part-time representative. He served in that role in the previous term, so he's continuing on. Our lead negotiator continues to be Forrest Quinlan, Chemistry Faculty, so very exciting. And then we do have an organizing team. And the lead of that organizing team is Joshua Maria, who's a faculty. And the lead of that organizing team is Joshua Maria, who's a faculty in physics and uh works in the writings, in the Math Success Center. So um that is our leadership team. We also have a C T A staff person that works directly with us as our connection with the statewide uh Faculty Association. Um, and his name is Demetrio Gonzalez Oy, so you may see him uh connected to us at times, and he's been very helpful. He's just starting this year with us, so um uh yeah, he's very excited. So I wanted to start with uh a sad note, but um something I wanted to say, which um and Dr. Powell did uh send out an email about this, and I really appreciate that. Um, but I wanted to honor a faculty member uh that recently passed away. And so um Denise Roselli was an English faculty member here for twenty one years, and um she was integral to Napa Valley College, and she was a respected and beloved English teacher, um devoted to her students and her department as English Department Coordinator and then our uh Lads Division Chair for many years. She shaped the departments and the division, always advocating for students, faculty and staff. She continued and stepped up in this advocacy in her roles with the uh M B C F A, uh particularly as in my role, the the role I currently serve in, I should say, as Faculty Association President um and uh and one of the negotiators. Her passing early this month was deeply felt by those who worked closely with her and uh counted on her as a friend. So we're very sad, um, but you know, we remember her well here at at N B C. Um, and I should say on a personal note, I got the, you know, pleasure to meet her once um a- after I, soon after I started at N B C, she came back to kind of visit with friends. And um, you know, it was incredibly wonderful engage. Um, and she, I remember she said, you know, uh, oh, so you're that guy, you know, and like, and it was very cool because she was definitely holding court in the one thousand building with all her old friends. So it was nice to chat with her. And I should say, just recently, I just thought of this, that like, you know, I I mentioned that Matt and I were hired together. We came, we were hired the semester after Denise retired. So you could say that it took two people to fill Denise's Denise's one role. So um she was very integral to this college, so. Um, anyway, I'll move on. Um, so anyway, the I have very brief remarks. I mean, the semester is exciting but busy with the schedule change. The faculty are very excited to be back, and we're excited to work with our students. We love every opportunity to meet new faces and see old ones and and continue to help them towards success. Um, so the main thing in terms of our Faculty Association priorities is that obviously, I'm sure all of you are aware that our contract expired at the end of the uh twenty-three, twenty-four academic year. So our main priority this year will be negotiating a new contract with the district. So we're very cautiously optimistic about that. We're, you know, that's always a a challenge, and we want to rise to that challenge together um with the district. And so we're, 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 like I said, cautiously optimistic. Um, and I should say that our position is and always will be that we are unified in our rights as an N B C faculty. We're ready for challenges of the future. We're thankful for lessons of the past and passionately dedicated to the success of our students and the institution as a whole. Thank you so much for letting me speak, and that concludes my report.
Thank you and welcome. Nice to see you. Uh, fifteen point one, President Cabinet Report.
We are in the third week of the semester, and I will say um it's my eighteenth month here, and it's the first time I have seen so many students on campus. It is glorious. We don't have quite as many in the evening, so you may not see all of them, but I have droves of students walking past my window every day. It's awesome. Let me just start by saying that. Um, you can see that that that's reflected in our enrollments also. Um, we are up from the same time last year, and each day we have thirty to fifty more students who are enrolling. So these numbers will continue to climb. Uh, this was true as of yesterday, five point seven five percent up. As of this morning was six point one three, so we continue to adjust. Um, I wanted to also mention about our distribution of modality, because that's always something people are interested in. Uh, our hybrid offerings are a bit larger than at some institutions. We have twenty-five point one one percent of our offerings hybrid mode. And the one of the changes that I'll be making to the online schedules that students can see is hybrid mostly in person and hybrid mostly online. Because many of our courses are mostly in person. I think that makes a difference when you're choosing a class. If twenty percent of it is online, that's a very different experience than the reverse. So you can see um that we have thirty-three point five four percent in person. We have a very small smidgen, two sections of high flex. Uh, if you're not not familiar with that term, that means the students can attend either in person or online, and they can do it entirely in person, entirely online, or day to day, make a choice depending on what fits their lives. So it's a very flexible mode. And then we do still have forty percent um online, and of course, we have a lot of students who need that flexibility in their schedule as well. And most of our students take take some combination of these. They're not entirely in one modality. I did also want to give an update. I've mentioned once before in a prayer report about A B eleven eleven, which is common course numbering. And um this, the first phase of the common course numbers go into effect in fall twenty twenty-five. Last week, the Chancellor's Office, after a lot of um really excited anticipation about what these would look like, released the first set of six templates. So the course outlines of record that faculty use are need to follow the templates. And the numbering is going to be an interesting communication uh challenge. So you can see on the left-hand side, these are the names of our current courses. So English one twenty, College Composition and Research, is going to be called English C one thousand. So the numbering is C for common course, and one thousand is being used as four numbers. I know it's a lot of numbers as the first course in sequence. So you can see there are two English courses that are in the first set of six, and you'll see how the numbering pattern works because in the critical thinking course is C one thousand and one. And in the future, as they release additional phases of the common courses, we'll see C one thousand and two and so on. So the courses in that initial group include Communication Studies, the Intro to Public Speaking Class, um Political Science, Psychology and Stat. And this is a very interesting thing. So at our institution and most institutions, statistics is in the math department. It's not differentiated by a different um name. However, over the summer, these are all courses that were developed with uh faculty consultation across the state. So this is a faculty-derived initiative. They felt it would be clearer to name statistics stat. So one of the challenges we're going to have is to communicate to students. When they're thinking math, you need to look at the stat schedule. Um, so we will be developing a communication plan around this in advance of the fall twenty twenty-five rollout. It all of these changes will appear in our catalog. They'll appear on our schedule. Um, this is the very first phase. You're gonna, you've seen these courses in our curriculum submission in November at your board meeting. Uh, we will have another set of templates, twenty-one more courses in Phase Two. That implementation is for fall twenty-six, and then in the third phase, they're seeing fifty more courses. So just as a final note about the intention of this, the purpose is so that students, regardless of what institution that they're at, if at some point in their educational career, they need to transfer to another college in our system, that same course will be recognized without need to needing to do transcript review or some other uh belabored series of processes. They will automatically know that is the same course, no matter where they take it. So it is a very student-oriented, student-serving initiative that will require a lot of um communication, planning, and just transitions can be challenging. Um, but I think this will be a really positive thing. Thank you.
Moving on as much as um wanna, uh, I'll just celebrate Latinx, Latina um Heritage Month, so very excited to to honor that month this month. Um, wanted to start off, like my colleagues have said, uh with the excitement of um really having our students back on campus. We've been busy in student affairs, specifically um over these last several weeks. Um, we've, we've hosted a couple of different events, starting with Welcome Week um and Information Tables. So this, this was um actually the first week of school. We had catecito en concha, so coffee uh and pastries. Um, that basically uh tables with with um staff there. We had faculty, staff and administration available to answer any questions and or do welcome to students. So really connecting students um to a friendly face, saying hello, welcome them to campus, and also just answering any questions as they were. They were coming to campus looking for their their classes. Um, was a fun activity, a little warm during that, I believe, warm week, um but but very well worth it to um see our students and and meet and meet new new or senior faces coming to campus. So that was the first week of school. We served about a hundred students during that that period, so um it was a was a pretty busy. Um, we followed that up with with Napa Valley College Spirit Week and Transfer Day. This was a three-day event um that really included the the um student life and um other other departments, even S S STEM, basically needs careers center. And what we did was we offered resource, resource fair for our students, so an opportunity for them to come to to campus, learn about all the services we offer, all of our different activities we have, but also just um really celebrating, building community with students. So um the S S STEM program specifically was uh excited of doing really cool things like pulling things up and all kinds of chemistry um activities going on. So it was a neat, neat uh activity, a lot of uh a lot of movement on campus, um a lot of uh fun games, that kind of thing with food. Um, and we concluded that with Transfer Day. So Transfer Day was on September fifth. That included over eighty institutions of higher education coming to campus. Um, two hundred and sixty high school students also participated in that event. So we're actively doing that recruit recruitment into the community towards working with our local schools. Um, and what we did is we literally locked students actually over to River Trail Village. I got to visit um River Trail and had lunch out there and just explored. So a busy, busy week um last week, last several weeks um for student affairs. Last Friday, we held our Student Affairs Council um Fall Retreat. This is a retreat we do every fall, um and this was really focused on um developing our goals for the semester for the year. They really were grounded in the college's vision, the mission, uh and and really around our plans, our strategic plans on campus, specifically the Educational Master Plan. Uh, we identified specific table, measurable goals, so impacting the smoother onboarding experience for students on positively impacting the system. So enrollment came up as a as a key area that we're going to focus on, really spend some time to to put apart and make that more successful for our students. And finally, I'm gonna end with um the pickup dinner around River Trail Village and the Housing Operations Team. So you may remember last, last night, I spoke about the operations team being lifted up. Basically, this is collaborative effort amongst student affairs and other areas. Um, the goal is really focusing on helping to coordinate and facilitate a successful student experience in River Trail. So it's an opportunity for us to meet um as a team to really talk around the experience of students at River Trail. So really the services um that are being offered, support, how much being offered, and and really also problems. If there's something that's going to the cracks, it's going to attend to. The uh operations team really does um does put put into action steps to take to address those those issues. So that team is often really, we're being on a weekly basis for that. That thing is very important.
Thank you.
We're calling a request to request to be brief. I'll do so. Just for quick items, uh let me focus on our uh our audit of financial statements is uh clearly underway. Um, I just uh wanted to bring up the fact that uh regular audit activity uh oftentimes has a request of the president and members of the board out of the out of the uh away from staff to make um candid requests about what they want to look at in the audit uh um or areas they'd like uh the auditors to focus on. So uh an invitation may be coming through the president's office to some members of the uh Board of Trustees to solicit that feedback. The second uh item in audit is I want to uh just make you aware of, uh we are one of reportedly ten institutions identified in the state to undergo an audit of the fifty percent law compliance um by the State Auditor's Office. We began, they announced that last year in the fall of twenty-three. We actually began the audit in the May of twenty-four, and we anticipate concluding it this month. The audit is is not intended to shine a particular focus on a particular institution, but to understand uh what's going on with institutions who are having challenges complying with that uh with that fifty percent law. They've also asked for um comments, suggestions about how to improve uh the ability to comply. So we're providing some of that information as well. Um, two other items in terms of student housing. This will be my last report on student housing as part of this report. I just did want to share with you that that our inquiries today are eleven fifty-six and our our uh fully executed license agreements are up to about one thirty-one. So uh that will be included in uh Dr. G's uh reports moving forward, but I wanted to make that uh pass that baton uh to his report uh moving forward. Finally, just an update on the One Education Center. They poured concrete yesterday. If you didn't get a chance to put your initials in the concrete, it's too late. Um, it it really is a milestone in that project, and we can see framing uh beginning very soon in that project is so far on schedule and on budget. And I will conclude my report.
Good evening. In Human Resources, we are continuing our discussions and work at the table, both with our classified professionals and along with our faculty. We look forward to the continued dialogue and the continued work to reach a conclusion to our labor contracts. Our open enrollment opens up September the sixteenth, and we will hold an open enrollment benefit fair on September the twenty-fourth, and I invite all of you, if you have questions, want to meet with some of our providers. It will be um from three to five in room seventeen thirty-one, which is our community room. October, September, October is a busy time for H R. It's our training time. It's when we get to attend conferences that is specific to what we do in Human Resources. At the end of this month, I will be attending the D E I and Action Institute that is being um sponsored by the Chancellor's Office. I will be serving as a panelist on the topic of career planning, career planning and how to get your natural. I will be sending staff to our Neo Ed Conference. Neo Ed is the company that provides um our software that we use for onboarding, applicant tracking, as well as um we also use them. But we are piloting, as we speak, um online performance um evaluations. I am um still the president of the Association of Chief Human Resources Officers and E O officers um for our California Community College System. And I will be attending um and have put on this conference that will be held from October the twenty-third through the twenty-fifth. Our H R staff will be attending. Some of the topics include E O Plan Framework, um Effective Onboarding Strategies, Infusing D I Beyond Human Resources. I want to lift up the fact that this is going to be held in Sonoma. And we are inviting folks from our college to be at this conference. And it's so important because we're in a valley that um was built on the backs of those of our descendants. Um, the the Procedural Program, and Dr. Guretto is one of our keynote speakers for our conference to talk about the Procedural Program and the impact that community colleges had on the descendants of that program and how it has impacted the economy of this area. So I want to thank Dr. Guretto for saying yes. I also want to say thank you to Doug Marriott, because he's bringing that home. Um. Also, um, and at the end of October, um, I got a chance to work with the Chancellor's Office and got introduced to a very special scholar, Dr. Estella Ben-Simone, um, who is holding an Equity-Minded Leadership Search Institute and has invited a select group of colleges to participate with a team of five. The team of five include the Chief Human Resources Officer, the Academic Senate President, two faculty members and a Board of Trustee. So we will be sending five individuals, which includes myself, Matt Kronzer, Amanda Badge, Chrissy Uemoto and trustee Kishna um to this. We look forward to engaging in robust discussion on how we can approach our recruitments with an equity-minded approach. We look forward to engaging in robust discussion on how we can approach our recruitments with an equity minded approach. We are taking a strong focus in HR on mandatory trainings. Here's a list of some of the mandatory trainings that we require all of our employees to take. I know that a lot of our community is listening. And for those of you who are listening who have not completed your cybersecurity training or the trustees included, please complete your mandatory training. Um, I will be coming back every month saying, please complete your mandatory trainings. Please, please, please. These are required and there's various reasons, whether it's legal or risk management. So if you have received an email from Keenan St. Colleges, pay attention to those emails. Click on the link. It's safe. It's okay. And complete those mandatory trainings. Um, we have for our recruitment, we have five open positions to which are funded by unrestricted funds, one that is restricted and two that is, that is funded by both. We do have seven upcoming positions. And we are reviewing the survey that we sent out on blind applications. As I mentioned before, we have implemented blind applications as a pilot and we're looking at the success of, of this in our recruitment process. And I will continue to look at this data and bring additional information back to you all. And that is my report. Thank you. Oh, don't forget, complete your mandatory trainings. Did I see that already? Just wanted to make sure. Complete your mandatory trainings.
I just want to say for the record, Charles, I actually finished mine at about four o'clock today. So I'm, I was only fifteen days late. So proud of that. Uh, I just have three very quick updates. Um, looking forward to our ribbon cutting ceremony for River Trail Village next Friday, ten o'clock in the morning. Uh, looking forward to seeing you all there. Very momentous event for us to take a victory lap on actually getting student housing built. So uh very, very fun day, happy day. Um, want to say congratulations to the Pride Alliance and Greg Maragla for opening up the Pride Center. If you haven't had a chance to actually go and visit yet, please swing by. It's a wonderful space, a dynamic space, very safe, welcoming space, uh which had some pretty cool features in it, including an art installation uh that celebrates pride from around the globe. And I just learned today, we actually have uh a pride flag that came from uh San Francisco. Was it Union Square? Castro, from the Castro uh that's hanging there that was donated to us. So the, the flag itself has pretty significant uh, you know, kind of gravitas to it. So please swing by and check out the new Pride Center when you have a chance. Um, also want to say congratulations to Mesa for uh almost completing their new space. Uh, Dr. G and I had a chance to tour the new facility this afternoon. Uh, they're still moving things over from the temporary space, but it is a much improved space, which has a lot of opportunity for them to engage in a lot of different activities. Uh, has good physical proximity to other departments and to the maker space as well. So congratulations Mesa and look forward to that uh move being completed. Now, the last thing is just a reminder, I will be out of the country in about nine days. Uh, I will be uh attending the Addus Conference, remember the African Diaspora Educational Summit Ghana. And uh, I leave on the, on next Wednesday. Wednesday after next, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm uh, all these days are bringing it together. On the twenty fourth is when I'll be leaving. Uh, so I will be uh glad to, you know, go and share in the wonderful experiences we have here at Napa Valley College, which I do. And also bring a lot back as it relates to uh the emphasis on the African diaspora and how it impacts education. So really looking forward to that. My thanks to the trustees for your support and sending me to this. Uh, it will be a great ED experience. And with that, that concludes the president's serial report.
Uh, Dr. Powell, sorry, I'm gonna interrupt. I was asked to add the accreditation. If we were gonna do a update on the accreditation or not?
Ah, the accreditation report, I, I really don't need to go over it. You can read it. It's uh yeah, just part of our monthly efforts to ensure that uh we're giving you know, full transparency to the efforts and initiatives that are happening as it relates to accreditation. So it's there for you. So.
Uh, thank you. Next is our standing committee and appointment or other appointment reports. Uh, Jenny Olson, Trustee Olson, that's.
We have a meeting next week, so I have nothing to report tonight.
Culture and Wine Ray Foundation, D W T, Trustee Ryan.
Uh, there was a meeting. Uh, unfortunately, this was yesterday and I had to be in court, so I had to be, miss the meeting. Usually I get a little report to, you know, help me and I didn't get it this time when I didn't show up.
We'll make sure you have one next time, I promise. Uh, Trustee Don, N V C Foundation.
Uh, nothing much to report. Um, fundraising activities for phase two, the, of, we're calling it the WEC for short, Wine Education Center, just, just so you guys know. Yeah, um, is ongoing and uh foundation board has decided to do an all day or half to three quarter day retreat on a Wednesday, October thirtieth.
Uh, and then we heard from our Audit and Finance Committee. Uh, next is fifteen point three feature agenda items. Do we have any agenda requests? Go.
Uh, this, I don't know if this will turn into a item request, but I was just having a memory about the ash landfill that, I'm sorry. Um, seems like I recall back when this first started being an issue that there was discussion about how it's really the responsibility of the hospital. And I just was curious if there is any effort or plan to make an effort to try to have any of our costs recouped by them.
Trusty Baker, that was a happy memory, I recall. Um, we, we, that is still on our, our list of to do's. Our focus right now is, is um getting agreement with, from the county on a permanent closure plan. And um, we're, we are um, we're moving in that direction. It's not always a smooth road. Uh, the, the site, the site is safe, um but working with the county has been um, has taken some time. Uh, the request to determine who, who can't be responsible other than the college for the remediation costs is still, uh, still on our agenda, but we have not moved forward with that yet.
Thank you. I gosh, I feel like I should slow down a little bit, but we're at fifteen point four trustee and board chair reports. Uh, let's start on this side this time.
Yeah, you're the guy.
Well, first of all, I'd like to report that I have completed my mandatory training and I did, I completed it like four weeks ago. I don't know. So just so the rest of you know, I, I'd also um, I attended the Mexican American Vintners Association Annual Tasting. Um, and was surprised to be called up to the podium and presented with a check to the uh N V C Foundation for money for some scholarships for students uh who are interested in attending the uh D W T program. So that was, that was a nice surprise. Uh, that's it.
Nice work.
Um, hi, I just wanted to share that September is Suicide Prevention Awareness Month and we are hosting here at Napa Valley College in the Performing Arts Center next Wednesday, um the first conference. Um, partnership between Mentis, Napa Valley College and Health and Human Services, Napa Valley, Napa County. Um, it's gonna be a powerful day. Uh, there's over two hundred people registered. We have a great keynote speaker coming from um back east from Maryland. Um, and six different breakouts that really focus on how we can protect our community from suicide. So it's really focusing on suicide prevention, intervention and postvention. We'll have a breakout um for survivors of suicide loss as well. So um, I hope you can make it. Um, free tickets available for anyone here who wants to come. And um, if you haven't made it for the whole day, it's from nine to three thirty. Um, I think at least for the morning, Dr. Powell's gonna welcome everyone um at nine AM in the theater and the Performing Arts um Center right before the keynote goes on. So thank you. I hope to see some of you there.
Well, John, I was, I was really sad to hear about Denise Roselli. I did not know that, that news. I had um Professor Roselli, uh my first, she was my first creative writing uh instructor here at the college. I, I remember, you know, there's some classes where we, we're just talking about this with somebody that we really remember and there's some that we don't. I, I mean, like I have so many foreign memories of her class. She was a great teacher. Um, this was like two, yeah, two thousand and two. It kind of made me fall back and uh, I don't want to say fall back in love, fall in love with writing. And you know, there's an attorney now where I do a lot of writing. I really look back on like her getting me on a right track to um, uh, to being able to write well, um or confidently at least. And so um, you know, I just, I don't know if there was a funeral or that already passed. And uh, but if there's, if you know, I'll, I'll catch up with you later. Um. Yeah, that's good to know. Um, and thank you for sharing that. Thank you for being here. You too, Matt. And uh, for ten thousand degrees, uh advisory board that I'm on, I had the, uh, kind of a big kickoff uh uh kickoff school uh party. And there were, so I mean, we have um they provide a lot of mentoring and counseling service, support services to our students. I think this is the highest number ever um where they have sixty students and, and that support really starts um at high school. So uh uh ten thousand degrees has partnerships with every high school in the district except for St. Helena. Um. And each, at each high school, they have sixty students. And so now, so you know, they've worked its way. And that's just this year, but now we have sixty uh students, ten thousand degrees supported students um here at the college, but they were so complimentary of you, Dr. G and the whole student services team. So I just, I wanted to convey that because it was just uh incredibly well. Um, you know, the college's efforts and the partnership with the college was, was very, very well received from the group. And I think um too, good to know, there's a lot of big donors there as well. So I had my foundation hat on as well, but I just wanted to let you know that.
Student trustee. Cindy.
Thank you. Yes. So to reiterate what Dr. Guerrero said about um Spirit Week. Spirit Week was last week from September third to fifth. It was a great opportunity for students to become familiar with various campus resources and student clubs on campus. ASMVC and the Honor Society both tabled. The third day of Spirit Week was NBC's fiftieth annual transfer day, which was like six, which was a success. I saw a lot of high school and NBC students asking questions and the whole library plaza was filled with students. So it was nice to see. Secondly, the PTK Board, along with Professor Gillis, our advisor, met with Dr. Powell this past Monday to discuss how to move forward with the College Project Advisor Council. And the PTK Board will meet tomorrow during our general meeting to begin planning. Thirdly, the Mesa STEM Center's open house was today and yesterday. It was, it's a great opportunity for students to go to the center and learn about the various resources that the program offers. Club Rush is a, Club Rush will be held next week during September seventeenth and eighteenth. It's a great opportunity for students to come and learn and join clubs on campus. There will also be a voter registration table on the seventeenth, which is also Constitution Day. As the campus is participating in the statewide ballot bowl competition to encourage students in higher education institutions to register and vote in the upcoming election. The League of Women Voters of Napa County plans to join us to help with the civic engagement efforts. And lastly, ASMVC will be holding its first official meeting next Monday, September sixteen.
Nice report, Cindy. Trusty Kishna.
I don't have much to report, but I'd like to say that as this contentious political season is heating up, I'd like to remind you to love your neighbor. Your neighbor is not your enemy or your oppressor. Chances are. No matter who they vote for, people have different political views and people, and there's a lot of misinformation, but the answer to misinformation is education. And that's why we're here.
And um, just a quick report. I, I'll be going to the Triple C T board meeting on the twentieth. So I'm looking at you, Jen, because you can share the notes about the fifty percent law. Um, I'll make sure to um include them in my report there. Um, we have been advocating to change the way that staff is classified to count towards the fifty percent law. So I, I know that that's why I was happy about them coming to Napa Valley College um or including us in the stats. So um, that's a very important meeting where we get to advocate for the different needs, especially for a district our size that's also community funded, um which is pretty unique too, um compared to everybody else. And yeah, I think that's all. I um just remembered from Bakersfield, I had a board meeting for the Sisán Chavez Board that I'm on. It's a I don't know if anybody knows this, but I'm on a, a high school charter, statewide charter school board. Um, so we're doing important work there, but you know, funding, again, we're state funded in many areas. And so it's very difficult to, it's a very difficult season, I think, right now. So um, I'm just, I count my blessings of being in Napa and Napa Valley and knowing that we're community funded. It's a nice um change of pace for me today to see that. So thank you.
Um, I was able to go to part of Flex Day, which was very nice and I got to meet with several of the faculty and uh to meet our new librarian. So that was nice. And uh Cindy, you kind of stole my thunder because I was gonna remind everybody that next Tuesday is voter registration day. But um, so she already did it, but I will uh be going a week after next down to La Spanos to uh colleges down there to help distribute students. And so I hope that we have a really good push here. And uh, that's all I have.
Um, mine's brief. I think we have a, a lot of good energy going into this year already and some new faces in here and I look forward to working with everyone and continuing with the positive energy. And I did wanna take a moment of silence for Denise. I met her when I first came on the board. She was a, a force. So uh moment of silence for Denise and we'll close the meeting in her honor. Thank you, everybody.